Hello, welcome to Breakfast Central. It's Friday and boy, I'm not so excited because we don't get to do this on Saturday and Sunday, but then despair, there's breakfast extra. But we won't be with them, so it's not quite the same. Like they say, if it's not Panadol, it's not the same thing as Panadol. Olive, good morning to you.
Good morning to you too. Even as you want them to increase your job functions, I don't mind. Yeah, I don't really, I'm not interested in telling lies. Because Rapture could have happened in the past two days and you would have been left behind.
It's because people were preparing their minds.
Because you told a huge lie.
No, didn't you hear that Jesus will come like a thief in the night? How can you know that Rapture will happen? It's going to take us by surprise, don't worry.
You say us, are you part of us?
Yes, now, part of the Rapture.
Good.
Don't worry, it might even be in the next hour.
Please calm down now.
No, it's possible. When we go for break, I'll just see me elevating to the sky.
Okay, good morning and welcome to Breakfast Central, the final edition for the week. We're counting down to the end of September, the month is flying back real fast, it's flying by real fast. And we know that is excitement in several quarters and several camps as many people are counting down to salary day.
End of the month.
After work in Kilo Koo.
Yes.
Badu no.
In Awana Badu. You know, Pashon Week, I remember that time when we went via, we had a fridge in the newsroom. And you know, pay week during that Pashon Week, the fridge is always full, all sorts of takeaway packs and things.
But like the cycle three.
A few moments later, my sister.
Empty.
Dry like desert.
He's not giving what he was meant to give.
He's not giving, he's empty.
Well, for those of you who have empty fridges, not to worry, in a few days and your bank accounts will be buzzing again.
Your payers will be sent to your account.
Payers will be sent to your emails.
To your emails, yes.
And then after that, your fridges will be buzzing, but that's not what we're talking about today. I'm going to share with you our top stories shortly, but before then, let's kick start it with wake up conversations. Here at New Central, our mandate is to take the story, to go where the story is, to hear the voices of the people and amplify the stories that have not been told, as well as ones that have been told but not told adequately. Today, we're going to share with you excerpts from our diaspora town hall meeting. And what we've done, and what we typically would do is go to the heart of a story, meet with relevant stakeholders on several key issues and have discussions. This time, we are in the United States of America, New York. We've just concluded or we've been a part of hunger as well. But let's take a look at our diaspora town hall meeting and then we'll come back to talk.
We refuse to do global best practices as long as we refuse to accept the truth, as long as we refuse to accept knowledge, as long as we refuse to communicate effectively in simple languages that people understand, as long as we do not see ourselves as one, it will be hard for us to evolve.
Part of the reason why you see that diasporans in Nigeria have become a little bit too laid back on these issues. The Nigerian government have always, always tried to control how the diasporans organize themselves. And one of the biggest coup they did against the diaspora leadership or diasporans was to create what they call Nigerians in Diaspora Organization, which was an appendage of the Nigerian government. People who could never oppose them, it was known by Abba Sanjo. And that took away the independent voice of organizing of Nigerians in diaspora or Africans, well, who are likely Africans as well. And I want to encourage Nigerians in the diaspora not to allow themselves to be sequestered under government-formed organizations, form your own organizations. Determine how you push for your right to vote because the Nigerian government did not form Western Union.
Let us come together as one, as diasporans, to use our voices to support those at home, to see how we can come into this notorious practices. My brothers and sisters, let us devise a new system. Let us see how diaspora can contribute. And we want the government to give the diasporans a fairer ground to be among the government and see how we can make policies that affect the people. I just wanted to devise a new system, a new way of doing things. That was my contribution, thank you.
The general theme today is, will Nigeria diaspora be silenced again in 2027? And the answer to that is no, it will. Because we have now understood as diaspora that we do not need to wait. We do not need to wait to be invited to the table, but we must take our places at the table. If we are not at the table, we cannot shake the table.
Thank you so much. Thank you for having me, distinguished listeners and fellow countrymen. It's my real pleasure to be here with you today. Even though we're scattered across continents, we are connected by something very powerful. And that is our deep stake in Nigeria's future. And we all know the numbers and it's been spoken about many, many times. However, we will talk about what we are missing by not letting diaspora participate as it should be in our national policy. The first is putting about, the second gap is voting rights. We all care about elections back home, but most of us can actually vote from abroad. Ghana, South Africa and others have all found ways to make Libya citizens overseas and we can do the same. The second gap is policy gap. And many of us work in systems with strong institutions and innovative ideas. That's a treasure trove Nigeria can learn from, but only if there's a clear way for us to plug it. And then thirdly, have the narrative power. We are natural ambassadors for Nigeria. In a world where perception drives investment and diplomacy, our collective voice could be a game changer. But that is only if that's organized. So what can we do? Well, we can take trips, like the first is push for diaspora partners, we are doing right here. Make a move for Nigerians abroad to cast a ballot. And the second is to build that fastway channels, to connect diaspora expertise directly to ministries and parliament. And then go beyond remittances to support civic tech, election transparency and innovation that can make Nigeria's democracy stronger. Democracy works best when everyone has a seat at the table. Especially diaspora means being one of Nigeria's biggest advantages on youth. And so let's build a new complex, not as spectacles, you know, but as partners and co-creators of Nigeria's democratic future. Because I believe that we can make it for more equals and more more respected. It's not possible for Nigeria to practice a land of, it's not right for Nigeria to practice a land of democracy when our citizens are global. And that is why I think this is very important that we close this gap. Thank you very much and let's keep the conversation going.
The president can't do anything apart from what our brother said here today. He can't do anything unless all your voices are made to count so that the National Assembly will do what we Nigerians or in Nigeria always describe as, they need to do the needful. They need to go through the third reading and the final presentation and then do their vote on it and present a bill to the president for accent before it becomes an act of law. That's the process. But that process will never happen unless there is some amount of pressure on the side of all Nigerians in diaspora and your own brothers and sisters back home in Nigeria. I remember many years ago that it's been said several times that if you're a Nigerian and you're sending money home to support your brother, your sister and any member of your family or even your friends, if you're doing that, you have some amount of influence on those individuals that you're sending money to. How are you using that influence? What are you doing with it? Are you asking them to know who is the chairman of their local government? So that if you decide you want to buy land or do anything in that local government, your brother can say, I know the chairman of the local government, let's go to the local authority and this can be done. All of these are not essential to those of us who have lived in diaspora. I lived in the UK for almost 20 years. So I know that if I want anything in my borough, I go there, I get it done. But it's not that simple in Nigeria. So you've got to make your money count for something. Your influence and those that you send support to or you do business within Nigeria, make it count for something. So that you encourage them to know their chairman, to know their councillors, to know the senator for their cemetery district, to know who is the honourable member of the House of Rep representing your constituency or your local government, to know who is the governor and to understand that they have the right to vote in or vote out whoever is going to be the next councillor, the next chairman, the next local government chancellor, the next governor, the next senator, House of Rep member and even the president.
So there you have a new central town hall in New York. And as we speak, the entire, I mean, the world community, diplomatic community is gathered in New York. So what better place would you have your town hall to have a discussion on Nigeria's diaspora voted as we head towards the 2027 elections? And I say New York because the United Nations General Assembly is currently ongoing in New York as we speak. And trust New Central to always feel the pulse wherever conversations like this are happening across the world. And great deliberations from yesterday at the diaspora town hall meeting. Nigerians in the diaspora are a huge constituency. They contribute billions of dollars in terms of remittances and their contribution to Nigeria beyond just sending money home is impressive.
It is impressive indeed.
And they're ambassadors of our great country.
When I think of.
It's only fair that they have a right to vote in the election.
I absolutely agree with you. When I think of, I mean, you did talk about remittances. I saw that in 2022, they had over 20 billion in remittances to Nigeria.
That's a huge amount.
Yes, I know I saw that, I was trying to confirm that World Bank in 2023 had given that report. And the truth is, if you're contributing so much, then you should have a stake in the conversations. When people say they're not in Nigeria, so they shouldn't be prioritized in voting, but you can use their money.
They have families in Nigeria.
They have families here, whatever policies that are made.
Affects them.
Affects them, even in terms of taxes, the monies they're going to be sending home being taxed. There's so many issues that affect them. I don't think that there's any Nigerian that, I mean, there might be, but it's not the norm to see a Nigerian that is completely alienated in such a way that they, their immediate family, their extended family, all of them are in diaspora, they have some link back home. So when policies are being made, it affects them, the leaders are being chosen, it impacts the quality of life that their loved ones will have, so they certainly have.
A lot of them would even rather have Nigeria work so they stop sending money back home.
Exactly, exactly.
People can take care of themselves.
And you know that.
I can imagine the number of calls they get, oh, somebody wants to do this, you know, issues here and there, things that are avoidable. So it's also their prayer that Nigeria works.
I was speaking with another Nigerian in the diaspora some days ago. And she was saying to me how there's so many issues that they face on a daily that.
Over there.
Over there, that is not, when they say that to Nigerians, you tell them, ah, but after all, you are abroad and you are earning well. The quality of the weather, first of all, not everybody is open to being in very extremely cold weather conditions.
Because that's not where you grow up.
Just air condition, my friend's mom, whenever she comes to my friend's house, she will be complaining about the AC. That's the reason why she doesn't want to go to London because she says, I beg, I beg, if she's complaining about AC like this, what happens? Whenever she goes abroad, she doesn't want to leave the house because it's very cold. So some of them have to live in very harsh weather conditions, even when that's not their natural preference.
And they've also broken away from social circles, familiar faces that they're used to.
Absolutely.
Familiar ways of doing things. And also Nigerians need to be considerate and not have a, what's it called, dismentality.
Entitlement mentality.
The fact that you're abroad doesn't mean you're not going through your own issues. They're the same type of people that the only time to check on you is, you know, to make one demand or the other. I mean, it's tough everywhere.
It really is tough for them. I mean, just to also add to the fact that while they are abroad, they also have challenges they're dealing with in terms of, like you said, being pulled out of their family, out of the regular migration, sharing families apart. I have very close loved ones that I haven't seen in years because people are living abroad and you're living here. You don't want to leave Nigeria, they don't want to come back. So it feels like the walls are getting higher and higher and higher.
It's a disconnect grandparents and grandchildren.
My mom, for example, hasn't seen my nephew. The problem is that in the next couple of years, we're going to see the impact of what we're doing. Languages are going to go into extinction, our culture, our values, our tradition, many people.
Watered down.
It will be watered down because the number of the next generation will be born abroad, raised abroad. So there's not that familial connection that they have to Nigeria. Beyond that, there are also other challenges that they deal with. Is the access to consular services? So when as a Nigerian, you're stranded abroad, you need to renew your passport, you need to get your NIN. When they tell you the procedure that they have to go through to be able to renew their passport, so you just really hope and pray that nothing happens to you, nothing happens to your passport while you're there. Because the challenge, you know, I had a friend who was in Nigeria for a wedding recently and I said, are you coming for that in December? He said, I'm not sure because I've been trying to renew my passport and it's been much of a Herculean task and I don't have a lot of leave days left at work to come. So just a number of issues, I think that we need to, as much as we think and assume that the diaspora community are living their best lives, they also have challenges that they're dealing with and it must be brought into the fold and be a part of the conversation that has been had here.
Unfortunately, that this current constitutional review that is ongoing, I don't think diaspora voting is part of the conversations or part of the items that the legislators are going to deliberate on. I know there's the part for electronic transmission of voting, but I recall, to the best of my memory, that there's no talks of diaspora voting. So they might have to wait for the next electoral cycle as 2027 plus four, 2031 to vote, which is.
Actually, it might be, because you know, I'm still looking online. I'm seeing that there might be, a bill was submitted by the senator to include the rights of, you know, those in the diaspora to vote. And I know that there are a number of matters that will come in, but for us to be able to, it's not something that can happen with.
Yeah, it will take a lot.
It will take a lot of deliberation.
And then the state houses of assemblies will have to also vote.
And then they will put in the modalities, you know, in place. And this has been, it has been an issue, this is not the first, second, third or maybe last time that this issue about diaspora voting has come up.
And the diaspora is quite wide, there are Nigerians in Tonga, there are Nigerians in Nowru, in St. Kitts and Mays.
It says you go to any country and you don't see a Nigeria, no matter what that country, just leave, that country is not the best.
There are Nigerians in Vanuatu. So who's going to take ballot boxes to Vanuatu?
Anyway, I think that the way they might then.
They'll walk out the modality, I think they can start with New York, New York, London, Berlin.
Canada.
Rome, Canada, Toronto.
And what they would do with specific. Exactly, they would just have the embassies, people would then go to the embassies, they cast their vote and then go home and then they can start to spread it to other countries. Or maybe we can start by other African countries.
Yeah, South Africans vote in Nigeria in the embassy, so it's not, you're not reinventing the wheel. Something that is doable.
All right, moving on from the diaspora conversation and our new central town hall in the diaspora, let's talk about teachers and pupils who have scooped water, they've come to the rescue after the Ikiti school collapsed. We have a video, we'll take a look at the video and then we'll come back to talk some more about it.
You know, the irony of all of this video, this video, this very sad video that we're watching is that the slogan for Ikiti State is fountain of knowledge. How do you expect to be a fountain of knowledge if the learning environment is in this state?
Is the water from the fountain that came into this classroom?
That must be the only explanation for this because, and I also don't understand, okay, for the sake of those that don't understand Yoruba, to translate what she's saying is, please come to our rescue. We've been bailing out water since morning, look at the environment where the children are learning. And yeah, to the best of, just to paraphrase, that's what she said. But I mean, there are different things to highlight in this very sad video we're watching this morning. And you wonder how things got to this level. Number one, beyond the roof, I don't think pupils should be learning in this sort of environment. Number two, why are you making, you can just send the children home because, look, you're exposed to the elements. How do you study in this sort of environment? Number three, why are you making them stay in dirty water, contaminated water to bail out water when without protective gear, nothing? And it's not even their duty to do it, just let the children go home. Why all this drama? But I guess it's the wow and attention factor. And now that they've done a good job in getting our attention to it, it would be nice to hear from the authorities in Ikiti State and their position on this, what they will do or why the school is in this data and their plans for primary education. I believe this is the primary school in Ikiti State. It's terrible, terrible, terrible.
There are many people that have a number of questions to answer and the Ikiti State Governor, the Ikiti State Commissioner of Education, Dr. Labib Badiri, definitely has a lot of, you know, questions to answer. This is beyond embarrassing, this is also a health hazard because beyond the fact that these kids will not have the opportunity to learn in a decent environment, they've also been exposed to health hazards, like you mentioned earlier. The, I mean, the first lady of Ikiti State is a professor and lecturer at the Faculty of Education in UI. Ikiti State is definitely, like you have mentioned, a hallmark for excellence, academic excellence.
Fountain of knowledge.
You know, a state that is known for PhDs, people who have dedicated their lives to studying and come out excellently. Shouldn't they be safeguarding schooling, you know, safeguarding the quality of education by giving, first of all, a decent school? I hope that that teacher doesn't face any backlash because shame on anyone who will go and fire that teacher.
And this is what happens when somebody does, I mean, a citizen, a law-abiding citizen, highlights problems. They are the first to take the fall. Remember what happened in Kebbi State with the primary healthcare center? And I hope they really don't victimize a teacher, like you said.
Yes, this teacher was saying that as journalists, as Nigerians, our charge is that the Ikiti State government must protect this teacher at all costs. Because what she has done is highlighted a challenge that needs to be fixed. We're hoping that they can jump into the arena like Governor Alex Otte did when he visited the campus in Abia State and saw dilapidated state of the campus. It wasn't even this terrible. And in a few months, the turnaround has been beyond amazing. They have a new facility, a new structure that is of repute, of national standard, worthy of being an academic institution where young Nigerians are going to learn. So the government should take this up as a challenge and turn around this building in a few months because the government does have the ability to do that, give them an institution that they'll be proud of, a decent institution. Again, when I see videos like this, what it always reminds me of or what I always say is that one of our rights as enshrined in the constitution is right to dignity of human person. And that video shows our human dignity being stripped away, being stripped away at the foundation of our humanity in the lives of our children, they're having their dignity being stripped away. And it's such a terrible thing to witness. So one, that teacher must not be fired. Two, the building must be brought down and built up in a way that Nigerians can be proud and citizens in Ikiti State can be proud of what they have. And three, that should be a wake up call for the Commissioner of Education in Ikiti State, for the government in Ikiti State to take a look at the schools and to be sure that all the students, all the pupils don't have to live in such a terribly degrading and unsafe learning condition.
Absolutely, and it also highlights how much emphasis we pay to education for that school to be in such a terrible condition. And these are some of the conversations they're saying, that, look, you want to host Commonwealth Games. Look at Parises, look at these schools, and this is just a microcosm. If you go around 36 states of the Federation, you definitely find lots of schools in that state. And in that state, it's not just Ikiti State, it's a nationwide problem and we need to do something about it. This should be priority. Look, we've not gone to that level of Commonwealth Games, when we get there, we'll cross the bridge. Yeah, but let's take what Nigerians are saying.
And we should start off with Anulua's tweet because Anulua, he's a public figure and he's passionate about education. I know he's currently doing his doctoral degree, if I'm correct. So let's start out with his tweet and then share what Nigerians are saying. Okay, I don't know if we have that tweet, but let's just share.
Let's just get reactions from Nigerians. I've bred, I've bred is better than none.
I was waiting for that.
CM, no one is, CM, no one is talking about states like this. All focuses on one, Lagos, Namiget Lagos, Obi N'Gueye, Obi N'Gueye Lagos, all claiming Lagos. So all these states, human beings don't live there. Among Nigeria needs real development, not just Lagos, but other regions, no areas, just imagine.
Wait, let's pause, did you not see what happened in Lagos in the past two days?
And how did Lagos get into the conversation? Please, let's move on. Chukujoke, proudly Anyoma, says this is Ikiti State, the state with the highest number of professors in Nigeria. Embarrassing, she says. Top guy says, if you're poor in Nigeria, you will suffer. No access to good health, no justice when you're wronged, no support when life hits hard. Poverty here isn't just lack of money, it's a debt sentence designed by a broken system. A very sad tweet there from Top Guy. Food for thought. Amma Ogudu says, I don't support the APC or some of Tinubu's policies, but even in Japan, UK and USA, schools get flooded and pupils learn how to do chores for their survival and the greater good of the society. Why is everything a complaint since President Bola Ahmed Tinubu became president? In some places, they don't even have classes, classrooms, talk more of roof, that we have an ultra modern classroom that weather damage is a plus through a learning curve. Please, let's just pause in this tweet, Olive, your attention is needed here.
Okay, so he says that he doesn't support the APC, some of Tinubu's policies, but even in Japan, UK and US, schools get flooded and pupils learn how to do chores for their survival and the greater good of the society. This, first of all, is a rubbish tweet, I'm so sorry, with all due disrespect. We can't start to look at using, and I don't even know if that's, first of all, is it true or parasyzing?
Yeah, exactly.
Right, it's saying that in some places you don't have classrooms, talk more of roof. Why is it that we are the ones that are best to compare with the worst case scenario? We that are meant to be the giants of Africa. So what your basis of comparison is, is the worst case scenario. It says that we have an ultra modern classroom that weather damage is a plus during learning curve.
How is that an ultra modern classroom?
But then again.
Who mentioned President Tinubu's name? When we started, you approach blame to those responsible for it.
Which is the state, the Commissioner of.
The Ikiti State Government and the Commissioner for Education.
It's just really sad where we look for opportunities to bring politics and so that person is obviously a politician that is hiding under the guise of, I don't support President Tinubu's policies. If we see, call it speed, it's speed, right? We see what is wrong, call it out for what it is.
Will you send your children to that kind of.
Exactly, would you have been happy to go to that kind of school?
Would you be happy that it's part of learning curve?
Maybe you would be happy, maybe you like something, but will you send your children? Will you be happy to see your children then?
It's learning curve.
It's a learning curve, an ultra modern facility. Please, let's take on that tweet and then wrap up the conversation.
Don't angry us this morning.
Honestly, well, come and see people, your government is suffering to please governors for, ah, all for 2027. Remove subsidy to give it to governors, but in better state now, you're asking the masses to hold the governors responsible. Finish what you have started to, call them to order. This person is making reference to President Bola Ahmed Tinubu anyway. And the final tweet, okay, we've talked about this earlier, that's all we have this morning. But then again, like we said, we're holding the Ikiti State. But then again, like we said, we're holding the AKITI State government, the Commission of Education in AKITI State, all relevant stakeholders to account. Protect your children. Protect them by ensuring that they are guaranteed the best quality of education. Best quality of education is not just by hiring great teachers. The environment plays a huge role. In where and how people can study and absorb the information being passed across to them. And finally, beyond even the great quality of education, allow them to be safe. That, that video we saw was not a safe video.
Yeah, that could be taped warm, sparrow.
Ring warm, tape warm, every nonsense inside that flood in the classroom. And then, I, I had hoped that the teachers and the schools can do better. If your school is flooded, please do not subject the children to child labor. Look at the ultra-modern roof. If the school is flooded, send them home.
Exactly.
It's not their responsibility to clean it. Instead, reach out to the community. If it's a poor community, let all the parents come together if they have to and do the cleaning, not these children.
Or get a pump to pump the water out. Okay, let's move on to our next wake-up conversation. Yes, this is, I mean, when I saw this, I had to blink twice and open my eyes and read it again. To be sure that, you know, I'm not in dreamland because it shows you how outrageous, how shocking this is. The federal government, Mr. President, has been fighting for local government autonomy and the little, they've not even gotten full autonomy. Is this what they're going to release money for? What's the story, you ask me? Adama State Local Government Wives Association has sent a delegation to Turkey, the country that formerly used to be known as Turkey. To learn how to support, what's the exact word, to support.
To support their local government chairman and husbands.
Husband. They have to go all the way with taxpayers' money.
And I think that is important because now, especially now that we've been granted autonomy. When the Supreme Court in the judgment in July twenty-twenty-four granted autonomy to the local government chairman. Part of the concerns were how the funds will be dispersed and whether or not these local government chairmen will manipulate the funds. And you know that in a number of these homes, the real chairman, it's not the man, it's the woman, it's the madam of the house. So I think that is very important.
Charities in Turkey.
It's a laudable achievement. I think they should be applauded. Are you laughing?
Olive, are you being sarcastic?
I think that, you know, they should be applauded for seeing how very important it is to invest in these women. To teach them skills on how to ensure that they support their husbands, the local government chairman.
Why couldn't they do it by Zoom? And why Turkey?
Oh gosh, I was trying to keep a serious face in saying all this. It's just that some people have no understanding of sarcasm and then it will now drag me.
The blogs look.
I fear I'm like one of them.
New central host.
It's a new central host.
Olive Demodi. Suppose we stage of taxpayers' money.
I'm very fluent in it. But I, I just think, I don't want to believe that that's true. I want to believe that that story.
I mean, you can see the videos there.
Well, let it be that the women on their own decided that they wanted to use that as a way to bond. And then they said, you know what, I'm going to Turkey and the one reached out to a few other friends. I don't want to jump into tradition.
It'd be nice to see the program of events and itinerary.
I don't want to believe that that's what happens.
For learning how to support their husbands.
Again, I want to believe that this is just a social media clickbait situation where somebody has decided to politicize the situation and make an issue out of it. But then again, if we get more information about that, we will share with you. Let's share what our top stories this morning are on Breakfast Central. Wabunga keeps shaking his head like, ah, I hear you, we will see you. This morning on Breakfast Central, President Tinubu flags of pilgrimage to Israel and Jordan. This is the twenty-twenty-five Holy Land Tour. Presents leave directive to Ainek Chair. Sparks debate. Why is the Ainek Chair going on leave when he's supposed to end his tenure in December? Concerns mount over women's seat bill in ongoing constitutional review. Nationwide blackout looms as electricity workers down to this really gives me a lot of anxiety. The newspaper front pages will be explored this morning with our guests and reviews. Stay with us. Welcome back to Breakfast Central. The National Union of Electricity Employees has ordered a total withdrawal of services citing unpaid salaries. Lack of working tools and failure to implement the national minimum wage. The union secular demands immediate redress or it says the strike will continue raising, it will continue raising the specter of a countrywide power shutdown. Similar to disruptions seen during past stoppages. Who will, who will keep the lights on? Who pays the price? And what is the federal government doing to avert another blackout threat by the Union of Electricity Employees? Joining us for this discussion this morning is Mr. Sam Amadi. Good morning very much and thank, good morning and thank you for joining us this morning.
Good morning. We seem to be having issues with your audio. Could you ensure that?
Are you hearing me?
Yes, we're hearing you now.
Great.
Okay.
Now, what's your take on this new threat of industrial action by the National Union of Electricity Employees?
Well, I think first, these kind of threat of industrial action causes panic to consumers. Who essentially would be frightened at the prospect of, you know, a blackout. Again, this is a very important sector, electricity sector, dealing with almost every aspect of our life. So you can imagine what will happen to homeschools, hospitals and how people feel. The drop in productivity arising from this and of course, the cost, the cost of looking for alternatives. Especially in a period where petrol is selling at a high price, diesel at a high price. So really is traumatic. But again, it's not new. They, they, it looks like we're going to, we, we, we always get ourselves caught in this. Big bat, big bat between government and union. And what makes it really dangerous is that the district workers union, it's a strong union. Unlike some of the union, other unions that may not have very quick power of sanction and very effective. So each time they threaten to do something and they do it, you feel it. Other units may not have that kind of leverage. So this is a very, very powerful union. And I think government recognizes that for now, with the shutdown. Basically, we can't do anything about it. So I guess there probably will be some late-minute effort at negotiation. And heading of full implementation of this, did this proposed strike if it does not happen. But this is regrettable that it's always these basic issues, welfare, agreements. Now they add the issue around the unbundling of the TCN, that means the creation of the International Independent System Operator. So I, I know that unions are always maximizing their value. And sometimes that pits them against government. But I think a most strategic, open and transparent management. Would reduce these, these resorts to industrial action.
Just to confirm, we, we, there's an update that says that there was an emergency meeting convened by the Minister of Power. Represented by senior officials of the ministry and attended by officials of the Federal Ministry of Labor and Employment. And it was said that this update and that after hours of deliberation, both sides agreed to resolutions that paved the way for the suspension of the industrial action. But we've seen multiple sources, you know, on one side, that those who report that the strike has been suspended. On the other side, that those who are still holding that the strike will hold. So we don't know what the true position is and we're wondering if you can help us with some clarity.
What I, what I think will happen, I suspect, like I told you, this is a very strong union. Government, forget the pretense. Their last meets, they'll get back to taboo with this. But look, when I was next chairman, sometimes they'll say, oh, they will threaten. And then the government will say, we're going to drag the Nigerian co, co-fin engineers, the military co-fin engineers to go. They can't, they can't. Because these guys, even the engineers, they don't, they're not familiar with the grid. So when they, the union threatens and they're going to switch off from Moshobo. If their staff in the Shobo switch off from the national control center, bingo, that's gone, that's it. So I think it's likely true that typical of government, late minute, they're going to rally you up, talk to these guys, promise heaven and hell, that's okay. You know what? Suspend it. Let's have now a good faith conversation. We are willing. And so I, I, I want to believe that they will do that because they can't have the strike stay on for two, three days. It's not going to happen. But if that happens, it's going to be tragic at a, at a large dimension to families, to home, I even to government. I suppose government is struggling. This government is struggling a lot with reputation, struggling with everything. So I do think they will find a way to either coerce or bribe, seduce or convince the leaders of the.
But regardless of, regardless of what they do, coerce, seduce, you know, it's just going to be a stopgap measure. Can we have a final solution to this? Because it didn't start from this administration. The union talks about unpaid salaries, lack of tools, non-implementation of the national minimum wage and so many demands. And you feel, you know, these are very commonsensical demands and for critical sector like electricity, that healthcare. Your economy basically depends on it. It's a lifeline. It's a critical infrastructure that the government will pay serious attention to it. What can be done to stop this from reoccurring every six months, every other year? And you know, just take care of the evils and the, the issues with regards to the electricity sector. Is it, or is it something that is overwhelming and can't be fixed?
I think you're very, very correct. If you look at those lists, larger list of grievances, nobody's been talking about the national wage, minimum wage implementation now. I mean, it should be taken for granted. I should be know, uh, fact that some people say, oh, because this is, it's called a national minimum wage. And it was negotiated with, by NLC and government. If I NLC grudgingly, I get that minimum wage. So what that means is that governments gave it. NLC grudgingly, if I still now, NLC still reflects from people who thought they perhaps gave it too early. So the least expected of government is to immediately pay that minimum wage. It shouldn't be an issue for them. So it's so sad that part of the, the reverse is moving. Now, April salary, since April, you not pay these workers. I, I'm not thinking that's true because I have a, a young boy who works in TCN who has not received a salary since April. I don't see why government would owe workers for one month, two months, three months. So what do you expect them to do? And that leads to the corruption, the system, and that leads to the collapse of the, regular collapse of the system, the grid. Because if these guys are not paid, they're going to go out looking for what to do and nobody pays attention to the grid. And that's why I think that part of what we are suffering, let's forget about expansion of capacity. But optimizing their availability is because the workers are not focused. So this is a, a double whammy. Governments not paying these families and they are suffering with their families and perhaps all are going to crime, corruption. By the same time, they're not even working well because they are not, they're demotivated. And that's why you're struggling. So people are thinking, oh, we're going to sign an agreement with the CEMs, we're going to look for load, this and that, we're going to give bailout. That's not really the problem. The problem is that there's a very low productivity in this sector. And that's why I've said that if you have a good tax force that emphasizes, you know, productivity and now on the task, you're going to optimize power of service delivery. Without even increasing the capacity because people are, it's a difference between expansion of capacity and optimization. So when people are motivated, paid, then they focus, they stop the level of frequency of outages. They pick up and clear lines more effectively. So, so I think that is really sad that the government struggles with this basic. And then again, it's possible for a country to have fiscal challenge. But that means that the workers themselves will be the first to know that our leaders are also getting a haircut. So when a government is spending like a drugstore seller, when a government is spending on projects that are totally irrelevant. To development and to well-being, then they can't tell workers that they shouldn't get what negotiated. So I can understand two scenario where a country has a fiscal crisis and the country leaders, country leaders communicate, not just in words, in action. And the citizens said, you know what, this is a low time. Even though we've had these agreements, we're going to play dead, dead brain for some time to allow our country float. But they can't be saying that if you see a leaders leaving the worst kind of life, you know, those blowing billions and on projects that are basically prestige or self-serving. So I think that the failure to honor these agreements i, i, is what is driving this incident industrial action. And it's not explainable. And you can, I can say, oh, workers be pathetic. I say, oh, and you know, tear people, things are difficult. But they can't, nobody can really say that in a credible way when all around you, what I've seen is aplomb, luxury, waste. And so the, the, the quality of leadership is a problem. Leadership is, is not, is not coherent, is not strategic, is not even disciplined. And it's not focused and not transparent. And so we, it's a shame that we're going to be doing this ding-dong. Workers, whether in the health sector, in the sector, in every sector, they will cry and threaten. And the government will come with palliatives and maybe band aid and commitment and promise and will kick the can again for a couple of months. And then you see that especially the health sector. So every time there's a proposed strike, there's a heading, heading of. Next time there's a proposed strike, they strike and head it off, either to whatever means. But the underlying problem, the basic issues of welfare of workers are not addressed. At the point you have to address, either the workers themselves share those ideas and see that perhaps those demands are necessary or you fulfill them. There must be a conclusion where we don't have to be coming back every season, talking about these agreements that are not fulfilled. Either we conclusively fulfill them or we really negotiate them in a transparent, decisive manner. And the workers buy into the vision of leadership and management.
Okay, go seven of the United Nations Sustainability, Sustainability Development Goals provide for affordable and clean energy. We are still talking about being able to pay salaries, being able to honor agreements. How far are we from achieving this goal?
We are very far from achieving this. For example, we're talking about salaries, about connectivity. We are very low connectivity. At least forty percent of Nigerian communities not even have access. So we are even trying to make sure those have access to power. Have some reasonable hours of service. But we are not even thinking around the many communities who are totally unserved. Or who are underserved. So we are still far from that. We are even, we have the lowest wattage per capita. Of electricity access probably in the world. But for the lowest, one of the lowest in West Africa, we are one of the lowest in the world. And, and, and that means that every person in Nigeria accesses less electricity than an average person in Ghana, even in Niger. This is where we, we probably supply them some mega watts because of our population. So these are issues that are critical to, you know, assessing access and consumption of electricity. And again, we are far because our management processes and leadership quality means that there's, there's no expected leapfrogging. You know, you know, where purpose is going, we're organizing at a fast pace. And then you expect more demand, electricity demand is going to be higher. And then you are not seeing quantitative increase in capabilities, in provisions, in availability. So I, I think that we, we are, we are not even closer anymore. In fact, the tragedy is that in rare times, not indicators. We are perhaps further down than we were eight years ago. That's really the troubling fact that if put all this together. We, we've not, we've actually made movement backwards slightly than we've made forward. And that's really bad. Because with our energy deficiencies and deprivation, we need to be making movement forward in geometrical proportion. We to be expanding at a rapid rate to catch up with urbanization, to also provide a facility for our development needs. And our economic goals that government sets for itself. So this is not good at all. We are nowhere coming to where we are going to, you know, deal with, solve the problem.
Now, Mr. Amadi, I do appreciate your frankness as a former insider and one who's very familiar with the workings of the electricity. Electricity system in Nigeria. But I mean, from our discussion so far this morning. Doesn't look like there's much cheerful news with regards to that sector. Are there any low-hanging fruits? Are there any positives that you've seen so far in moving us towards a more sustainable? And reliable, reliable energy system in the country?
And I think the good news is that the government. And I think the good news is that the government is not disrupting the structure and the policy plans so, so much. I mean, Nigeria has only one thing for me, uh, or one of the few things going right now is that we have, we, we've attained some consistency in the general outlook, outlook of our en- energy policy right from the dying days of Kuntabasanga in two thousand, two thousand, where the early days of Pasig in two thousand and, in the two thousand, two thousand and one, when the national electric power policy was formulated till towards the end in two thousand and six, when next started and, you know, Yeradua, Jonathan did a lot, you know, did a lot of reforms, and then Bwari and Tinubu have continued. So that's continued, and that speaks for something good, that at least if they're going to be vicious, it's at the margin. The broad outlook remains the same. The second thing perhaps people will say is going on is that if you look at the companies, they are declaring profits, uh, despite all the fact that we don't have power. So it, it means that privatization typical across the world results in better profitability for owners of the, of, of, of the companies because they are going to, uh, trap dead workers, they're going to do their best to uh, stach, uh, the leaking, um, uh, um, revenues, and then try to improve on revenue management. And again, um, they, they, so they're, they're profitable. Look at all their companies, they're profitable. Uh, so power is not growing, uh, quality is not improving that much. So it, it typical of anybody who has studied pro- privatization in the world, the UK as well, that the first thing that gets done well is the companies get profitable, for obvious reason, they are maximizing their profit, reducing losses. Well, the, the difficult side of pro- privatization and e- energy reform is translating, taking a win-win. So you improve the fiscal health of the companies owned by private sector, you improve the public side of feed by improving power delivery, reducing costs, and improving time of, of consumption, hours of consumption. That has all happened. That's really difficult to do, and that's where leadership in the public sector matters. How do we ensure that these companies are getting financially better by reducing their losses, that they are also improving the quality of service? So the, the real challenge now for this sector is to translate this new outlook, this maybe positive outlook to investments and ensure that those investments themselves are managed in a way that we see steady, sustained improvement in both the quantity, meaning hours of consumption, and the quality of hours. Uh, 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 and this is important because the more we improve power supply, we reduce the cost of business, even cost to homes, we improve, uh, domestic, uh, 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 human development indicators in terms of maybe health, in terms of education, and of course, we improve social safety. Because if a neighborhood is, where lit because we have lights everywhere, you see a decline in crime and other, and so. So this has a, it's a fine effect on human development and economic growth. So I think that's where we, um, we are now, we need to shift this, but, you know, shift a little bit so, so that not just the companies are held, but let the public be heard, let there be more light, let there be more investment, let there be more efficiency really in terms of the supply, distribution, transmission of electricity. And, and that's where the, the rubber meets the road. So some fair comments, some good, like basically in terms of policy continuity, more maybe in terms of now the companies are, government no longer dealing with totally bankrupt companies, but dealing with companies that are slightly profitable, significant worth, but we need to have to deal with uh, electricity industry, where consumers are getting benefit, and we are supply improving, you know, uh, uh, radically.
I, I, I completely agree with you. I would look forward to having steady, sustainable, not just quantity, but also the quality of electricity that, uh, is being transmitted here in Nigeria. Mr. Sam Madi, the former chairman of the Nigerian Electricity Regulatory Commission, thank you very much for joining us.
Thanks for your time and insight, yeah.
Thank you.
All right. It's Coronation Day, and I'm not talking about the, I mean, when I say that, it reminds me of a certain cartoon. There's a cartoon, uh, Elsa Frozen, when she comes out and says, it's coronation day.
I didn't watch animation, I grew up watching movies.
Well, coronation, this, uh, Frozen is a recent cartoon, bro.
Okay.
Well, it is coronation day, and it's been a week long of activities, both religious and cultural, as we celebrate and prepare for the coronation ceremony of the forty-fourth Olubardon of Ibadon. That's happening today in Mapo Hall in, uh, Ibadon. We have, uh, Obarashidi, who is, Obarashidi Adewolu Ladoda, who is the forty-fourth Olubardon being coronated today. We have our correspondent, who's on standby to bring us the updates regarding what the celebration is like, what is to be expected today, and we of course are looking forward to speaking with him. Please join me as I welcome Victor. By the way, good morning, Victor. Where exactly are you? Happy coronation day to you.
Thank you very much.
All of us.
Uh, Victor, by the way.
Mbadike.
Mbadike, sorry. Yes.
But that's fine. So guys, it's looking like a Christmas. I know how Christmas is, uh, my close, my Nigerian states, usually, uh, it's, uh, that colorful of red and white and stuff, you know, but anybody, it's, you won't find red and white anyway. You find Abada, you find Buba, and all those, you know, your traditional ties, everybody sets to witness one of the, uh, most interesting and most important um, uh, coronation in the history of the Ibadon, uh, indigenous. So you also, uh, get to know that the president himself will be here, uh, we still, still expecting him with his itinerary. Uh, he's a very close friend, uh, to Obarashidi himself. Both of them were once governors of the respective state as far back as two thousand and three. And, uh, I mean, it's historic basically because this is the first time we're going to have an ex-governor becoming monarch at this level. And this is the biggest, I can tell Olivia and Menga, this is the biggest, um, coronation ceremony ever in the history of the Olubardon here in Ibadon. And if you sit around me, this is just the entrance of the venue itself. You can imagine what it will look like when we get into that particular venue. So everyone here is set to, you know, enjoy themselves, you know, have fun. We expect, of course, the vice, former vice president Ato Kapo Baka himself, uh, former, uh, ministers and current ministers, ex-governors, current governors still here. It's, I mean, it's, 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 it's a litany of, of, of the big boys in politics. Uh, because of course, he, he himself, Obarashidi himself, was a politician back in his, in his, in his days. Uh, so he made headlines back in the days, if you remember. Uh, so after that, he's going to make a lot of headlines as the forty-fourth Olubardon of this historic city. So it's, it's an interesting, uh, situation, basically. Security is tight all the way from Lagos yesterday, from Ibadon Express, we're up until this point, it's several checkpoints, several checkpoints. And of course, you understand why it is so big.
So we're expecting Mr. President, and I heard that for the first time, there was an, uh, first Olubardon uh, lecture that happened during the course of the week. But, uh, Victor, if you have any information on today's activities, when would he be presented, his staff of office? What are we to expect? And what's the day's lineup like in terms of activities?
Okay, so, uh, Menga, this, this, um, coronation has seen, uh, several activities take place in the last six days, if I'm not mistaken. End until Sunday, when, uh, they have their Thanksgiving service. It's a week-long event eventually. So today, just basically, having, um, you know, a litany of the big boys in town to witness the coronation of their friend and brother, uh, Obarashidi Adewolu Ladoda. Uh, so we have the president, of course, is going to come around and give his speech. And, um, a lot of them will, of course, you know, have their time, uh, to speak, um, maybe eulogize the, the president, the personality of, of Obarashidi himself. It tells you how important this coronation ceremony is, uh, in the history of this beautiful city. It's an ancient town of Ibadon, Menga, and we are wait to see exactly what it will, uh, turn out, basically. Everyone is trying to get access into this place, every single person, boy, girl, child, student, everyone wants to get in here, but you know, it's not possible. As a matter of fact, if you don't have, if you did not have your access card, you might not have access to this place. And so basically, everyone seems to be excited to be here. So we're going to wait to see in the next few minutes, uh, uh, we'll find out exactly who is there, who made it here, what they said, what they intend to, um, achieve with their entire presence here. Uh, that will be, uh, what we expect to see. We understand that this is going to take as long as three or four P M this afternoon. So I hope you're here to give you guys updates. Just stick around, guys.
How secure, how tight security is, how much of a high-level access event it is, by celebrity journalists, the, a royal journalist reporting royal events, and I'm just jealous, I wish we could swap places for a bit so I can put my eat amala. I think, uh, Ibadon has one of the finest amalas I've eaten in my life, Ibadon and a bell cutter. No, I'm hungry. Thank you very much.
I'm jealous, I'm sorry, I'm going to buy, all right, guys, all right, guys.
Thank you, Victor. Uh, I look forward to having the updates. I, I can't wait to see the pictures. We hope it's as colorful, you know, and beautifully depicts the Yoruba history, culture, and tradition. And from here, we believe it is Uhuru going forward, uh, with the, you, you understand what we're trying to do. It's been a very highly contested, a keenly contested, uh, position.
And I wonder which one he would like the most. But the good thing about this position, he's taken state political office before. There are term limits to it, but he will be Olubardon until he joins his ancestral. So I think the traditional is less stressful, and, you know, you're not under much scrutiny. So, uh, we wish, uh, Obarashidi Ladoda, the forty-fourth Olubardon of Ibadon, a happy reign as the monarch.
And like we say here in Nigeria, or to be precise, let me bring you back to, yeah, the Yoruba became part of Nigeria. Yeah, the Pelo Ri, Kibata, Pellese. So congratulations to, uh, forty-fourth Olubardon of Ibadon. Let's now bring you what's coming up next on Breakfast Central.
And coming up next this morning on Breakfast Central, federal government mandate, leave for INEC chair, group back reserved a seat bill, and we'll be giving you updates from the United Nations Security Council debate. Stay with us, Breakfast Central continues shortly. You're welcome back to Breakfast Central. Our next conversation is one that is stirring serious questions about electoral integrity and executive power in Nigeria. The alleged directive from President Bola Ahmed Tinubu asking the INEC chairman, Professor Mahmoud Yakub, to proceed on terminal leave has thrown the political space into whirlwind of speculations. No official statement from the presidency, no confirmation yet from INEC, just a trail of council meetings, constitutional debate, and whispers of political maneuvering.
Now, let's break down the legal framework. Section one fifty-four subsection one of the Constitution of the Federal Republic of Nigeria provides for the appointment of INEC chairman, that is by the president, subject to the Senate's confirmation. Section one fifty-five subsection one, removal can be done by the president, but requires the support of two-thirds majority of the Senate. So can a president simply ask the INEC chairman to go on leave? Or is this a soft removal dressed as a procedural formality? Joining us to speak to this and react to this developments, elections and development specialist, Mr. Paul James. Good morning. Thank you for joining us, Mr. Paul James.
Good morning and thank you for the invitation.
All right. So first of all, is there cause for worry? The INEC chairman's tenure is meant to end at, uh, the end of the year, December twenty twenty five. And the question is, why is he then made to go on leave? Is this a cause for worry? Is there really much to do about nothing?
No, I don't think it's, there is any cause for worry here. I think this is a standard operating procedure in most government establishment that as a tenor ends, usually, uh, government appointees go on what we call terminal leave. Most times, they go three months to the end of their tenure. And just to put on record that the current INEC chair, Mahmoud, had also been mentioning this in almost all of the meetings that I have attended, uh, that had been organized with election stakeholders, just to, uh, draw attention to the fact that we needed to pay attention to the appointment that will be made into INEC. So for me, the worry will be how pervasive of, uh, fake news, or if you like, misinformation are twisting this. It is constitutional, like we know, section one fifty-four, that the president appoints, uh, uh, INEC chairman with the confirmation of the Senate. And section one fifty-seven also makes it clear that the, uh, uh, president cannot arbitrarily remove INEC chairman without also, uh, two-third confirmation from the Senate. So I think that settles the case. For me, I would rather we pay attention to the kind of appointment that will happen into INEC. We were in similar scenario, if you recall, in twenty sixteen, twenty, uh, seventeen, that was the end of, uh, Jegasteno, when there was an integral appointment of, uh, Haja, I mean, as a career, and the kind of, uh, issues that that generated, a lot of people went to town saying, oh, she was related to, for example, Wari and the likes of that. We should rather be focusing on who is appointed because you want to see an INEC chairman that is untainted, that is unblemished, if you like, especially with any kind of, uh, political coloration. You want to see an INEC chairman that has the competence, the capacity to lead the commission. And for me, that, uh, is where we could turn around this conversation around integrity, around confidence building, especially in the commission. So I would rather in the next two months for Nigerians to pay attention to who becomes INEC chairman, or for Nigerians to begin to prioritize the kind of persons or characters that they want to see take up, uh, the, uh, the sagging of responsibility to chair the commission, uh, for the next, uh, five years. Let's not forget that this is the second tenure for Professor Mahmoud, and constitutionally, we know they can't go beyond two tenures. Perhaps this is also why, uh, the commission, or if you like, if, uh, we just think, it is just normal that at this point in time, within to the end of tenure, that the commission chair will take the terminal leave.
Thank you very much, Mr. Paul James, for clearing the air on that and giving us the, uh, constitutional, uh, reference towards, uh, to the appointment of the INEC chairman. Now, you said what Nigerians should focus on is the integrity and the person that will be appointed as the next chair of INEC. There's been calls for INEC reforms, and, uh, one of the key issues from these people that have been calling for reforms is the fact that Mr. President uh, is the one who appoints the chair, chairman of INEC. So regardless of if you appoint a saint or a sinner, that, the fact that the president is the one making the appointment, uh, does not really augur well for democracy. They say there are issues of accountability and transparency because he who plays the piper dictates the tune. So what, what do you make of this? And I don't think that constitutional amendments is going to happen, uh, in the next two months or whenever this appointment will be, will be made for a new INEC chairman.
Of course, I couldn't agree more with you that whoever plays the piper dictates the tune. And this has been something that Nigerians have been clamoring for, for over twenty years. If you recall, the late, uh, president, Yeradua, also raised that concern after his election. He even questioned the process that led to his selection, and one of that led to the appointment of the Justice Waste Committee that came up with the recommendation that perhaps we could shift the burden of appointing INEC chairman to the Judicial, uh, Service Commission. But again, Nigerians have raised, also raised eyebrows to that, that maybe you may need an independent commission or independent body to deal with that issues. We could take a leap from what is happening even in neighboring Ghana. I think even also have, uh, similar arrangement, not sure of South Africa, where you've got independent bodies that do the nomination and then the National Assembly confirms, uh, of course, with also the endorsement of the president. That may take a long process to achieve. Now, given that we are just at the end of the tenure of the current INEC chairman, but perhaps it should also be an issue at the front burner for, uh, uh, constitutional, uh, uh, amendment, uh, discourse. Nigerians have suffered a lot, especially with issues of confidence in the Election Commission. And if that, there is one way to turn that tide for me is in the appointments, not just only the chair of INEC, but even in the rest of the electoral commissioners. We saw, I mean, how people protested some of the appointment that happened just before the twenty twenty-two election. If you recall, the appointment for the INEC chairman is Sokoto, the people of Sokoto rejected that appointment. And then also, I think, appointment in Anambra State. If I recall even what happened in, uh, uh, Gagawa, I'm not Gagawa, rather, uh, Adamawa State during the twenty twenty-three election, the character of the person that managed the election that wanted to take over the role of the returning officer, this are not the kind of persons you want to be seeing in an electoral democracy. And that is why we said there is need to pay attention to the kind of appointment that will happen into INEC. If Mahmoud's tenure is ending in the next two months, I think by the end of November, you want to see by now that at least if the president still have the prerogative of making the appointment, that at least some names are put forward to avoid also all the speculation that is happening in the space. You want to see that these names are scrutinized by Nigerians before the names are even forwarded to the National Assembly. We don't want to have a case of take a bow and leave, but rather we want to see the pedigree of the person that will be appointed, especially in relations to their involvement in the, even in the electoral space, to what level do they even understand the election ecosystem and how they can manage elections effectively. I think it's critically important. It is also important that this appointment is done early because we have Anambra elections coming in the next two months. Perhaps the person can also oversee the election or on the study order commission, national commissioners as they manage the election so that from there on the person can take on learning through the process and preparing for the twenty twenty seven election. So importantly, I would say early appointment is critical at this point in time. We may not go back to begin to change the constitution, but we can take it off from here. That while this appointment had happened, within the next five years, Nigeria must go the route of making constitutional appointment to ensure that we don't we don't continue to leave this at the doorstep of the president.
Now, just to follow up to the question on appointment, we've seen oftentimes things are either zoned or politicized in Nigeria. And the last two INEC chairmen have come from the north. Does it matter where this appointment comes from? And is there any arrangement on zoning with regards to the appointment of INEC chairman?
Well, if you want to go that route, also people who may want to ask how about the other INEC chairman before that? If you also think that since the commission started, we had had more appointment in the South actually than we had from the north. But I would not be more bothered about where the election chairman will be coming from. But rather, like I would keep saying, what level of understanding do they have even about the Elections Commission? We saw some recent appointment that had happened within the commission that we thought is actually a best fit. For instance, if you recall the appointment of the resident electoral commissioner that happened in Ondo, she used to be an INEC legal officer that works in the commission headquarters that was now appointed. I think even the Wahab that is in Nasserah State, I guess now, Wahab also used to be a staff of the commission. So you want to see that an appointment, this is also why you can encourage the staff of the commission to know that there will be hope that one day they could lead the commission. Perhaps maybe to help some of them to even take that job seriously. There are persons within INEC or person that has served also on the INEC that would think can do better if given the opportunity. There are national commissioners that we have interacted with and with the level of competence and how they had managed some of the electoral processes, we think they can do better. So maybe the president need to look within. And then, of course, if all of this are bound by the, within the premise of what the constitution allowed, maybe I think we could start from there. So that's for us what is more important, honestly, where the person is coming from. But to what level does the person understand the process? At the one level also, will the person stay non-partisan throughout their tenure as a chair of the commission?
I want to go back to the initial question I'd asked you about if this is, if there's any cause for alarm, because you had said that this is normal procedure, that there's really no cause for alarm. However, this has happened few months to the end of his tenure. There was a cancellation, there were cancellation of meetings. His final consultative meetings with the political parties had to be canceled abruptly. A number of meetings had to be canceled. There have been a lot of rumors flying, you know, speculations as to there being trouble in paradise between the INEC chairman and the current administration. If when the INEC chairman was fully in office, there were still issues with how INEC carried out its duties and its responsibilities. Shouldn't we say that there really might be fire on the mountain, especially because we have proceedings that might be interrupted as a result of this change and under elections around the corner? So what do we make of this? Can we really say there isn't any fire behind the scenes?
First, I don't speak for INEC, but to be very clear that the consultative meeting is an arrangement from INEC with stakeholders where every quarter, INEC will meet with stakeholders to provide updates on what it is planning for the election. Quarterly meeting, not monthly meeting. And now we are in the third quarter. So this meeting could happen any moment within the quarter. That's my understanding. Secondly, also, the commission may have been occupied with other issues. We also received the same invitation as the political parties to also be clear. It's not only the political parties that are invited. And then usually set aside a week in a quarter where they interact with security officials, political parties, election observers and the media. If that is not happening, perhaps that could be some reasons from the commission that you expect the commission to provide clarity on. But beyond that also is a point that for INEC's chair to go on terminal leave, we know this is statutory. This is almost like what happened in every agency. And I don't know why now we want to begin to spotlight INEC or what is happening there. Like I said, the focus should rather be on who becomes the next INEC chairman. Now, I mean, we had had reasons in the past when Nigerians would have called for the head of the INEC chair. Why are we having this conversation now? I don't want us to, I don't want us to belittle the conversation. I mean, for me, I know as big as Nigeria will be thinking about this, the conversation should be who becomes the next INEC chairman. This happened in twenty, I think twenty twenty six, where the INEC chair also go on terminal leave. And then after that, there was an interim appointment. So maybe if that is the approach that the government want to take, I wouldn't know. But like I said, I think they can even start up these processes now before the end of the tenure, finally at the end of November, we should have a substantive INEC chairman that can just take over immediately.
All right. Thank you very much for joining us this morning on Breakfast Central. We continue to track developments with INEC and potentially new INEC boss. I mean, for now, we do not know that he has officially ended his tenure. What we know is that it's a terminal leave and we don't know if this will extend until the expiration of his tenure, but we'll continue to track updates. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
We're going to break now. When we come back, Breakfast Central continues.
You're welcome back. Now, calls for greater inclusion and guaranteed representation for women and persons with disabilities dominated Monday's national public hearing on the ongoing constitutional review in Abuja. The session organized by the House of Representatives Committee on Constitution Review and chaired by the deputy speaker Benjamin Kalu followed months of public consultations across Nigeria's six geopolitical zones. Speakers at the hearing said Nigeria's democracy cannot deepen without delivering steps to end systemic exclusion. Former Senator Florence Itagura criticized taking attention to women's issues and urged lawmakers to back the reserved seats bill.
Disability advocates pressed for stronger constitutional guarantees cited in triple jeopardy faced by women with disabilities and demanding that disability be recognized as a protected category under fundamental rights. They urged the National Assembly to ensure reserved seats for people with disabilities move beyond paper promises to mandate government at all levels to promote assistive communication and integration. The Police Officers' Wives Association Power called for constitutional provisions to reserve leadership positions for women in the police, military and paramilitary agencies, arguing that gender balance will strengthen security institutions. A coalition of female political leaders also submitted a memorandum urging swift passage of the reserved seats bill, describing it as a historic chance to correct Nigeria's gender imbalance and strengthen inclusive governance. Joining us is gender equality advocate Ademike Aloba. Good morning. Thank you very much for joining us.
Good morning. Happy to be here.
All right. Let's go into the main question. How important is this reserved seats bill and this conversation to be had at a time like this? And I ask because for those who bring forward the argument that saying that we should reserve certain seats for women isn't necessarily equitable as you would push. I mean, we just had a conversation with a guest yesterday who said that are we now arguing that people should be voted based on their gender and not on their qualification? So how important is this conversation to, you know, is it to be had at a time like this?
Thank you. I mean, this conversation has been on for a while. And let me start off by saying that if it could have worked any other way, it won't have. If a difference could have been made in the political ecosystem of Nigeria to include more women, there had been a lot of work, a lot of effort invested in getting more women representation, but that hasn't worked. And that's the nature of delivering equity. The idea is if a table is imbalanced, introduce a leg to make sure that table is balanced. I do get the consternation or the worry of people who think, oh, so now we should elect have women in positions simply because they're women. But that's, that's, it's not an invalid argument. I just want to be clear because it's fair. It's fair to understand every side of the argument. However, it's a risk benefit analysis situation. And if you weigh the risk versus the benefits, the benefits far outweigh the risk of simply putting women out there just to be elected simply because they're women. Clearly, Nigeria needs intervention and it is becoming increasingly obvious that this is the kind of intervention that would effectively not even completely turn the train around, but begin to move the train towards the right direction. Evidence, the data shows that in women participation in politics, in government has continued to decrease. And there are several reasons why this continues to happen, you know, different barriers from religion to economic barriers to all of these things that we have discussed and I imagine we'll discuss this morning. So my response to the question of, hey, just because they're women is that there is far more benefit to introducing an extra leg to enable equal, well, it wouldn't be equal exactly, but to enable increased representation of women. That will be my response to that. The benefit outweighs the risk.
Yes, the benefit outweighs the risk and I quite agree with you. But I want to also bring back a follow-up question, which is also some of the pushback that we've received when we've had this conversation on air. Again, just yesterday, we had a guest who had said that even the women themselves don't support women at the polls and that when women are asked to vote, they will typically not vote for themselves. So it's a bit of a tough nut to crack. What will your response be to that as well?
I mean, that argument has existed since then. Usually when conversations of gender equality come up, one of the first doors that gets shot in your face is, well, women don't support women. So what do you want us to do about it? But here is the thing, here is the way I think about it. If all your life you have been told that your fingers are only for waving and everywhere you turn, that message is reinforced. Your fingers are only for waving. Your fingers are only for waving. If you hear that for twenty years and then somebody comes and say, you know, you can use your fingers to do other things. You can use it to clap. You can use it to eat. You can use it to pick stuff off of the floor. Do you know how difficult it will be for you to make that shift? Let me link that back to the issue of women don't support women. I don't think it is particularly women don't support women. I think we have a societies that is, a society that is designed to view women in a particular lens and the world is in such a precarious place when it comes to women and women's participation and women's rights today. Ridiculous that we're where we are today, but that's the reality. Women should be taking care of children. Women should be in the kitchen. Women should be supporting. How people come up with the idea of support simply being in the background is beyond me. But here's the thing, the problem is not that women are not simply supporting women because they're women. The problem is that we have been wired. The society is wired to think that. See, you'll find if you talk to women who think women shouldn't participate in politics, it's less about hate and less about not wanting other women to progress. And sometimes you'll find people saying, I just want to protect her. How is she going to survive in such a toxic political economy? I just don't think that women are made up. And so it's not all toxic, which is why it is important to have those conversations and explore the reasons why people are making this decision. But it is less about, oh, women not supporting women and more about our society is wired to see women in a certain way. Women not excluded, which means that it is going to take just as much work to convince the men as it will take to convince the women. So I, I'm not, I don't want to give fuel to that idea, even though I understand where it's coming from. I want to pivot the idea to the fact that the problem we all have is that we have lived in societies that has told us that women shouldn't be in certain places. And so it'll take just as much work as we are putting into ensuring there is political representation. It'll take that much work in behavioral communication and strategy to make sure that that changes. So let's not shift the goalposts or shift the assets to say, well, if women don't support women. It's almost like saying that, show us what you can do for yourself first before we do something. And we're saying, that's not the issue here. The issue here is that the same way you need convincing, the same way the society, men need convincing. And I say that in the, that's my nicest way of putting it. The same way men need convincing, women need convincing. We have all been conditioned to think that women should be in a certain place. And that doesn't exclude women. And the fact that the person who is on the ballot, for example, is a woman, doesn't change, it doesn't change years of thinking that a woman should be in a certain place. So that's, that's the best response to the question of women don't support women. It's less about women and more about the entire society, which means that as we're doing important work in ensuring that there is a constitutionally backed pathway to having increased representation, we have to do as much behavioral work to make sure that the idea is not just appealing or welcoming to men, it's welcoming to the whole of society, men and women inclusive.
Now, I didn't care for, there are quite a number of men there listening now and saying, look, why do women deserve a reserved seat and what is so special? And what we should be looking at is the quality of representation and the ability to carry out their responsibilities. They also often make this erroneous mistake of pointing to examples of women that have had the chance. They never compare the total numbers. They just, you know, make one, two, three, four examples of women that were indicted for corruption or that had to be sacked for one reason or the other and say, you see? Why, can you explain to us why that is wrong? And why it's important to have female representation in politics?
Let me leap off from the idea of, oh, well, we gave them an opportunity and now they're corrupt. I mean, for every, this is anecdotal data, so this is not real. I don't have the exact figures, but I imagine for every woman who has been indicted or prosecuted for corruption, more men who are probably doing the same thing. Corruption does not know gender. So if we have a problem of corruption, we have to deal with the problem of corruption. Corruption is not, is not, it doesn't change its shape or color, whether it's man or woman. So that, again, that argument is just another, it's just another goalpost moving attempt to say, well, we gave you the opportunity. But here is the thing, I like to, I use this example often that if you don't know where the shoe pinch is, you are unlikely, you are unlikely to be able to design a solution that will fix that problem. And I say this, look at the situation of insecurity in Nigeria. I do the social experiment every time I get the chance and I ask, in a room full of men and women, I ask the men, what's your greatest fear? And they're like, oh, the economic impact of, you know, being kidnapped, for instance, and my family, where they get the money from and stuff like that. And also, I don't want to die. When you ask the women, the answer is almost always unequivocally rape. Now, if there is a senatorial committee on interventions for victims of kidnappings in Nigeria and that committee is made up of men, what kind of solutions do you think they would design? That's why it's important to have representation in the room. That's why it's important to have different voices with different points of view and different experiences in the room. And you can layer this over many issues. The challenges with childbirth, maternal and child mortality. The way it is, the big issues that are obvious to women are oftentimes different. And this is not a question, and this is something we have to say often. We shouldn't have to say it, but we do have to say it often. It's not that one opinion is better than the other. It's not that one point of view is better than the other. It's that all points of view are important. And that's the best argument for having women in the room. That's the best argument for having people with a different point of view, a different idea, a different approach. And evidence has kind of shown, I could find the data and quoted for you, that women are really great in crisis. And so what happens to our, again, I'm using the example of what's on the table. What happens to our lawmaking? What happens to legislative interventions for big issues in Nigeria? For example, again, insecurity. What happens to that when we have more women in the room who can provide alternate points of view? Who can provide, you know, a different perspective, a different approach that we can bring together to bring a solution? So the question is, or the answer to the question that is that there will always be better solutions when you have more people in the room with different points of view. And that's the best argument for having representation for women.
Let's talk about, yeah, let's talk about persons living with disabilities. We've been talking about women and it's, I feel like, I mean, we said triple, double, triple, quadruple jeopardy for women who are living with disabilities. For women who are living with disabilities, what is the current picture of representation? I mean, we see it even in regular day to day living. Uh, how well do we factor in persons living with disabilities? And what lessons can we draw draw from countries like Kenya, in other countries where we can see that persons with disabilities already hold senior legislative positions?
The the argument is the same. If I ask you right now, how equipped your studio is for different shapes of persons with disability? And and there are different, there are different sections, there are different experiences to disability. If I asked you how equipped your studio is to have a blind presenter? If I asked you how equipped your studio is to have um, uh, um, uh, a person with a mobility disability, how equipped is your studio to have that? And so if I were a person with disability who is wanting to get a job with your organization, even if you thought me excellent, and this this happens a lot. Look, we think you're excellent, we think you can do the job, but we just don't have the facilities to cater for your need. And that argument sounds legitimate. That argument sounds like, well, you know, we don't want to injure the person, we don't want to, we just want to make sure things, we don't have that. What laws do is that they make the burden of accessibility, the burden of opening the door is not on the person who is not in control of their disability, it's on the people who should be opening the door. But I mean, you can look across governments, state governments, na- state national assemblies, uh, uh, um, federal, uh, the national assembly at the federal, you can, you can, you can, you can look across board and you can see that even though there is a law that was had forth, took twenty years to pass to ensure the, uh, to ensure that uh persons with disability are are better accommodated within the society, none of those spaces have representation for people with disability. What do you think will happen to the implementation of the law? I I and I'm referring to the law, uh, um, I forget the specific title of that law now, but it's uh, it's, it was passed in twenty twenty one or twenty twenty two? I'm I'm beginning to forget that. What do you think will happen to the implementation of that law? If we have more persons with disability in the room where the decisions are being made? So the argument is really the same. So the beauty of equality and diversity and equity and inclusion is that it makes things better for everybody. And I think that 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 would be my answer to that question. Clearly, we have a society that wants to pretend like we don't have persons with disability. But we we do have this person and they're contributing to society at different levels, at different cadres. They have the ability, but the burden, the responsibility of making sure they can access places, um, uh, positions, for example, again, she used the example of inclusion i- in 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 the political landscape. That burden is not on them to figure out. It's not on them to convince Nigerians that they should vote for them. That burden is on the burden bearers. It's on the people making the laws. The burden is on the people sitting on the bill right now, gender equality bill, for example, or sitting in the room where they can propose such bills right now. The burden is on them to make sure that when these people show up, there is freedom, there is access, there is to actually show up in their full selves.
Now, I didn't care, uh, beyond politics, how much progress have we made? In terms of uh, attending to the plight of people uh living with disabilities in Nigeria in the last uh ten years, for example? Uh, are we m- making, are we, are we moving the needle? Uh, are are we moving the needle at all? Uh, are we still the same in terms of accessibility? And uh, attention to the plight of uh people living with disability in general as a people?
Yeah. Okay, so um, Discrimination Against Persons With Disability Prohibition Act, twenty eighteen, uh, that bill was passed into law and that bill had provisions for many things, the list of which is making uh public, public buildings, public institutions accessible. I mean, that's like the least of it. Um, there's supposed to be a national commission, i- it does exist, a national commission for persons with disability, um. The law exists, there's just not no real implementation of that law. So what is happening is that even though there is a law that should prohibit certain things, for for example, banks are public buildings and they are required by law to make their buildings accessible. I can ask you now to think about a bank or any bank that you've been to in the last couple of weeks and think about accessibility in those spaces. So the law exists, implementation is where we have failed and where we continue to fail um, in in Nigeria. And we're failing not just, we're failing ourselves as a nation because they are part, persons with disability are not a separate clan of people that are removed from us. So the simple answer to your question is, we've not done well. Uh, we 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 fail, we're failing to take responsibility, we're failing to even implement a law that exists. Well, that law had a window uh of, you know, just a a window where institutions, organizations are supposed to, sort of like an adaptation window of about, I think.
Yeah, that was, I I think there was a five year grace. There was a five year grace period for that law in twenty eighteen. Unfortunately, we still go into a lot of buildings that don't have wheelchair access.
Absolutely.
We have a long way to go when it comes to, well, we, I I want to believe we're making progress. I mean, we're seeing arms here in Lagos State, for example. We're seeing people who are championing the cause, who are leading uh institutions that advocate for persons living with disabilities. One of them happens to be a namesake, um, Adenike Lawawo, Oyetende Lawawo. But let's now talk about the seriousness of our lawmakers. It's one thing for them to say that part of the con- conversations that will be put forward is, because at the constitutional review is the prioritizing of women and persons with disabilities in politics and leadership positions. However, from what you see, do you have faith that it's not just going to be mere talk, mere rhetoric and just, you know, something to look good and make it look like what they're doing, they're really prioritizing women? Or do you think that it's just one of those things that will, again, be a subject of conversation but not get to a logical conclusion?
Do I have faith? Um, I'm not sure faith is what I have. Hope is what I have. Hope that after all these years, there is more clarity as to why this needs to happen. Hope that there there's been enough pressure built to ensure that this bill finally moves over the line. So do I have faith? And I won't comment to, you know, just the history of, you know, politicians and how they play the politics. I won't comment on um, the ability, interest, however we want to put it, on of the national assembly to get this over the line. But I do have hope. I have hope that there's been enough work done thus far to make sure that this gets over the line. I have hope that we're not tired of fighting, that we're not tired of talking, that we're not tired of winning over because there's going to be a lot of that. A lot of things that we assume is common sense, like, I don't have to explain this to you. Well, the reality is, we we probably have to explain with a nice smile on our face. You know, that's that, that's the burden we bear. By we, I mean, the community fighting for for equality and representation across board. Um, so I I, do I have faith? Am I like, oh, yeah, this is going to happen? No. Am I hopeful? I'm very hopeful that we can finally get it over the line.
All right, um, Adenike, thank you very much for joining us. I don't know if you guys have any final questions before, uh.
I mean, she's, she's answering in the best way. Hope, I mean, that's all we, we have. And it's, I I appreciate your positive mindedness and we really hope that uh it goes beyond just a talk shop and empty promises and we'll really see action when it comes to the plight of women and people living with disability. Thank you so much for your time and insights.
Thank you. It was my pleasure to be here this morning. Thank you.
And I think that that was a very important conversation to have, Benga, because like we've mentioned, the number of excuses and reasons people give as to why uh, they don't think that the gender, for example, that five percent affirmative affirmative action should be upheld. Because they would say, are we saying that we're giving to women because they're women, not necessarily because they're qualified? So are you, are you meaning to tell me that people who comprise the majority of the population deserve minority representation? All lawmakers out of one hundred and nine, you know, it's not a good picture.
And the obstacles are there. The, I mean, the the playing field is not level.
It's not at all.
We really need to do something about it. And in our own lead to way here on Breakfast Central, sometimes when you're not around and Joe is presenting, I really feel your absence and I'm never myself, that's why sometimes I make sure he's wearing a feminine color like pink when you're not around.
So this is even part of the things that they are pushing against, like, when I say this one now, you can knock on my drag me. But pink does not have to be a feminine color. Men wear pink too, women wear blue too.
It's true, uh, like.
Like I'm wearing pink.
Yeah.
And I'm wearing blue.
Like our director, Tunde Raji, he loves pink so much.
I can see that.
I call him Pink Panther.
Yeah, so try. Okay, we will be bringing you breakfast headlines in a moment, but just a, a quick way to wrap up the conversation would be that we must continue to follow up because the way that we hold our lawmakers to account is to ensure that we are a part of the process. We have to go to the open hearings, we have to ask questions. You put those leaders there, you repri- you voted them to represent your interest. And women, people living with disabilities deserve as much representation as the men do. And we need to see more wo- women also being interested in policy, uh, politics and the process of governance because you cannot effect the change that you want to see from the outside. So on that note, we go on a break and when we come back, we'll be bringing you breakfast headlines. Stay with us.
Hello, welcome to Breakfast Headlines. I am Benga Aborowa. Beginning with politics, the leadership of the Opposition Coalition has demanded that its members resign from their current political parties and join the African Democratic Congress fully, although it gave no specific deadline for the transition. The National Public Secretary of the ADC Balajab Lai stated this in Abuja on Thursday following a caucus meeting that included senior party leaders and prominent political figures. The All Progressive Congress and the People's Democratic Party have dismissed the directive by the African Democratic Congress directing prospective members in other parties to decamp to the ADC ahead of the twenty twenty seven general elections. The National Union of Electricity Employees has directed its members nationwide to withdraw their services indefinitely caused by Transmission Company of Nigeria accusing, I beg your pardon, the Transmission Company of Nigeria of failing to address longstanding welfare and operational grievances. In a circular signed by its acting general secretary Dominic Igwebike, the union said the strike became unavoidable following the expiration of an ultimatum served on TCN. The union outlined its demands, including the implementation of the national minimum wage provision of working tools and protective equipment and end to casualization of workers and payment of salaries reportedly owed since April twenty twenty five. It also cited unresolved issues arising from the unbundling of TCN outstanding retirement benefits and the need for operational vehicles. Two security matters. An explosion has rocked the Obinwan Lake community in in Jabba, local government area of Emo State. The incident, which happened on Thursday, killed a man in the southeastern state. viral clips that surfaced online shortly after the explosion showed the victim in pain with his legs damaged. Residents believe that the victim identified as Chingwaroki Madu must have been working for some terror group claiming to be a Biafran, claiming to be Biafran agitators. The Emo State Police Command confirmed the incident in a statement on Thursday. According to the command spokesman Henry Okoye, the victim was carrying the bomb when it exploded prematurely. The Nigerian police force says it is entering a new phase of intelligence led policing with the launch of its criminal database, a system designed to attract repeat offenders across different zones of the country, strengthen prosecutions and link Nigeria into global policing networks, including Interpol. A special journey of police car, Dagbeto, made this known while declaring open a training session for operatives who will manage crime records at zonal, state and divisional levels.
With the support of the federal government and our partners, we are building a system where every arrest is recorded, every case is documented and every officer is accountable. No case will vanish into forgotten files. No conviction will disappear into silence. And let me add that this reform is not for the police alone, it is for the Nigerian people. Where citizens know their complaints are properly recorded, when they see follow through in investigations, their confidence in the police grows. Trust begins with record keeping. This initiative also positions Nigeria within the global community, within the global policing community. Through inter- integration with Interpol, the Africa Union Border Program and UNO DC frameworks in West Africa, we're ensuring that criminal offenders in Nigeria will no longer find sanctuary abroad.
And moving outside Nigeria, the police in Madagascar Thursday used tear gas and rubber bullets to dispose hundreds of protesters in the capital, Antananarivo. The demonstrators defied a ban to protest repeated para and water outages in the city. Police clashed with protesters attempting to break police barricades near the Amboi Jauvoto district. At least three people were arrested. Protesters waved banners, demanded restored rights and showed the pirate flag symbol popular with anti-establishment youth. Fires were set at the homes of two lawmakers which firefighters controlled amid stone throwing. Demonstrators say daily power cuts of up to twelve hours hurt their lives and livelihoods, calling for urgent solutions. The United States President Donald Trump announced on Thursday that he had spoken with Israeli Prime Minister Benjamin Netanyahu as part of ongoing efforts to bring an end to the war in Gaza. Speaking from the Oval Office, Trump expressed optimism that a ceasefire agreement could be near. Trump's remarks come amid heightened diplomatic activity in the region as the United States intensifies its push for negotiated resolution to the conflict. No specific details of the potential deal were disclosed, but the president's comments signal a possible breakthrough in ceasefire negotiations.
... with a lot of countries. And uh, you may be even more happy when you find out because we spoke with Bibi Netanyahu today and we spoke to all the leaders in the Middle East, who are great people and uh, we're getting pretty close to having a deal on Gaza and maybe even peace, which would be the first time in about, what, two thousand years, I think? In the region, I'd say the first in, Steve, what would you say, first in two thousand years or maybe one thousand?
And that's all on Breakfast Headlines. I am Benga Aborowa. Breakfast Central continues shortly.
Welcome back to Breakfast Central. Let's now take you through the headlines on the front pages of the newspaper. We're joined this morning by public affairs analyst Otunwud, our director, Bijon. I wanted to give him special intro before you now review the person you just went white. Good morning, it's good to have you.
Good morning. Thank you very much. Good to see you. Are you from your state, uh, by any chance? Because I see you.
You have, you have. Coronation Day.
You are there, kind of.
No, it's Coronation Day.
We're on our way now. Yeah, we're on our way there.
Oh, that's lovely, that's lovely. Congratulations. Uh, on behalf of all of us here at New Central, we celebrate, which, are you really from your state?
Not from one of those states.
Okay, okay, all right, no problem.
We have somehow become a global citizen, somehow.
Apparently, we have. Let's get into the papers this morning and to mention, you know, as we always do every morning, you can call in and share your thoughts on any of the stories. And you can also drop your comments on YouTube. I'll be heading to YouTube shortly to pick some comments in the chat box. We're streaming live at New Central TV. Now, the front page of the papers this morning, beginning with the Punch newspaper. And let's see the big story there.
Coalition demands Attiku and Obi's full membership. I believe uh, Mr. Attiku has joined fully, but uh, Obi's full membership. I mean, you know, this is just the punch, being, trying to, I mean, that make the headline scream. There's a directive from ADC that says, their public secretary, that says that everyone should resign their appointments in their current political parties and join the ADC fully. I guess the idea behind this is that you can't serve two masters. And what's the implication of this?
Okay, so, uh, is the.
Okay, let's, let's, let's take all the stories first and then we'll get back to that. Okay, let's, let's take all the stories first and then we'll get back to that. A P S, the writer says A P C others push back as coalition directs members to abandon parties for A D C. Ladoga ascends Uluwada throne. And the writer says Makinde court shuts annual leave for coronation to new top dignitaries to attend historic ceremony. Once governor, now monarch, Ladoga's royal story, why Ladoga's emergence was rank-off free, Valogun designate, Uluwada's unique succession system. Over fires forces Delta Lagos Atlanta flight diversion. Interesting, that's, I'm glad disaster was averted. Six hospitalized, as yet another building collapsed in Lagos. Marketers fault dangoltes five hundred thousand liter full delivery. Free threshold. And eight hundred and four billionaire arms imports ignite cause for local production. Southeast governor, especially for Namdikanu, says Alex Otte. And Nigeria Delta militancy made Jonathan's presidency possible, says Attiki Tom. And finally, Aina gears up for off-cycle pools, promotes four hundred and seventy-one officers. There you have it. Where do we start?
Okay, I, I think we should start from the coalition. It's the highest sense of political responsibility for, in fact, it is illegible for one to actually have to be paraded the membership of two political parties. And either you're doing it disguising or you're doing it directly. And we must come to a point where we realize that the old saying that you put, you don't put your eggs in one basket is counterproductive when it comes to politics. In politics, the principle of political commitment has made it very clear that the only way you can amount to anything politically is to be committed. You put your, your eggs in one basket and you have to fight for it, you have to defend it, you have to do everything possible. One of the reasons why P D P is in disarray today, if you allow me to say, is because of people like former president, former vice president Attiku. At every point on all three is political party, he has always had an option. And in this kind of situation where you have a political option, you just do here because you can run to the other side. So I think the best thing to do at this moment is for everyone, you want to belong to A D C, you want to sign up for A D C, you have to sign up. It is not because, political party is not just about the figures in there, is if the essence of.
Yes.
If the essence of the coalition is actually to restore power in twenty twenty seven, then every one of them must put their egg in one basket and ensure that they fight for it and defend the basket at the end of the day.
But this directive doesn't come with a time limit or ultimatum, so there, I guess the spirit of the letter now is appealing to their conscience that, look, this is the time to decide and they might be stolen. But looking at the political calculations, we have Obi's name mentioned here. Attiku has fully joined, we know that. What might be causing this delay is Mr. Peter Obi not to show of using the Labour Party as a tool.
Politically, as we speak this morning.
Is not hundred percent committed to the A D C project.
Even now, for Peter Obi, it's more of being sure than being committed. And unfortunately, it's quite unfortunate, the way things are now, he may lose side, he may lose out both sides.
So what, a blade in hand?
He doesn't have anything in hand. He doesn't have anything in hand. If you look at Labour Party today, either you want to take it or not, it's almost in disarray. You look at A D C, there's internal ragging and all of these things, except all the major players come together and they show more commitment to this thing, it's not going to work this way. It's not going to work when, do you know how popular Obi is? Obi is extremely popular, but he's not going to get, he's not going to, now, you are now introducing a third party. Once they have a third party, that means that it's even dead on arrival. You, do you know the person they want to fight against? Can I read his credentials to you? The sitting president of Nigeria, who, it was very clear that the powers in Asurok never wanted him to actually get the A P C ticket. He understood and he had done a long term, and when you talk about political investment, it is not a subject of right or wrong. It's not a matter of right or wrong. He had done this political investment for a whole lot of years. And he has got a lot of people to rely on politically. And like I said, it's not a matter of right or wrong. So this is the person you want to use divided house to fight against, even a religious philosophy, when they say that divided house cannot stand against, that.
Divided house in itself cannot.
Cannot stand. So it's not a person, if you are, if you are dealing with somebody who does not understand politics, you can say, if it doesn't work here, it's going to work here.
Having a coalition or still individuals, because they don't seem to align in principle, because all these delays is, is really going to play a part at the end of the day.
Okay, so the coalition we have now is different from the coalition of twenty fourteen. The coalition we had in twenty fourteen was coalition of political parties. Now, the coalition of now is coalition of political leaders. That means that A D C is standing as a political party. They are not expecting any other parties to come join them. What they are doing is they are poaching the heads and significant figures in all other political parties to come and join. And if they do it very well, there's a hope for them, there's a big hope. But where the, you know, you cannot change somebody's political perspective. It's going to take a while to change it. Attiku's political perspective is always to have an option. And as long as you continue to have an option, look at what former President Buhari did with C P C. He actually stood from A M P P, he ensured that he carried his people along, but as we speak now, it's even difficult for the obedient to move from where they are now to A D C, because they are not certain whether their principal will get the ticket. And because of what he has known, if you get to, if you get to political party primaries, you will understand why Obi is afraid. Political primaries, people spent dollars, in thousands, to get delegates to vote for them. I know that in my loose house.
Wazirio Vadama.
Of course, it's, it's very clear.
Wazirio Vadama has gone there first, just like musical chairs, first to, first to reach.
It's not even about first, until they get to a point where they are clear about what they want. You, how did P D P get to this point? It was because they were going to convention and the powers that be were not strategic and disciplined enough to say, oh, we are zoning our ticket to one part of the, of the nation. They threw it open and they compare themselves with the party in power. The party in power has a leader, a unified factor, the sitting president. But when your party is not in power, it becomes exceedingly difficult. It's not practically impossible to figure out one person who is going to be a rallying point to put all the forces together to support one person. So with the way we are now, opposition is at the lowest ebb in Nigeria, because the A D C that people look up to to be able to provide that kind of opposition, people are creating options, left, right and centre.
Okay, I mean, the politics of Nigeria's politics is a story that is an unending journey. Keep flipping the book and their latest developments. I still want us to look still on the front page of the Punch newspaper. Over fire forces Delta Lagos Atlanta flight diversion. I know that Benga touched on some of those stories. Nigeria Delta Militancy made Jonathan's presidency possible. Attika Tom says that. Do you think that's true?
That's, that's not true.
Or Yadrua's death?
Yadrua's death simply just paved the way. With the Nigeria Delta Militancy, it will still be a bit difficult for Jonathan to contest as an independent candidate. Independent in this sense that he didn't inherit, he didn't come to power through the death of his principal. It will have still been extremely difficult. It was not Nigeria Delta Militancy that killed, that killed Yadrua. It was the death of Yadrua that created the path for him. And because everyone at the point had come to love his demeanor. He wasn't, he wasn't power hungry. He didn't, he didn't look as if he was somebody who was running around to get power. It was the same thing that happened in Nandus state. Governor Ayedatu, one of the soft spots that people had for him was the way he was treated when his, when his, his principal was sick. I was in his office with about ten or eleven other people at the point to actually tell him that we were with him. So it was not about the political party, it was about the fact that the demeanor of the then vice president, he wasn't angry and a lot of people just pitied him. And when he became president, that also happened in his twenty eleven election, because people just felt that, let him continue. And they voted for him massively. So, but again, it is also important to say that the Nigeria Delta Militancy at that point actually pointed the attention of the Yadrua government into the South Sub Zone. And he was the one, he was the brain behind the amnesty that people enjoy today. You can walk on the street of my community, for example now, and turn right and left and you see people that have become lawyers through the amnesty programme. You have doctors, in fact, you have pilots. That would have been impossible if not for the amnesty programme.
Very true.
Yeah.
Okay, um, Namdikanu, we are still on that matter. The southeast governors are pushing for his release, according to Governor Alex Otte. I mean, we've been on this Namdikanu's matter for the longest time. Sometimes he hits much. It's, it feels like many people are conversing for it. After a while, you don't hear about it. The last I heard about it was his lawyers were advocating for him to get some form of bail so that he can get his treatment, but we're still on this matter.
Yeah, it's, it's painful. But again, the level of insecurity in the southeast, and a lot of people believe that if Namdikanu or when Namdikanu is released, that it will calm the tension. Of course, you know there are another dimension of split up groups that have come up and they've been kidnapping people in the name of non, non government. But again, I, I think one solid thing about democracy is for, is the ability of the government to abide by the dictates of the law, of the law through the court. So if the court grants anybody bail, I, I think to respect our democracy, that we should actually be bold enough to, to release such people. But again, security matter is always a matter that people want to run, run from, because without security, there can not be any nation.
I believe we have a call from Bielsa State. Good morning. Sfama Kwaibam, I beg your pardon.
Uh, what I want to say is, I, I, you're on the newspaper headline saying they need full membership of Attiku and Obi. My dear brother, I would say this is the beginning of the end, because that is where the main matter is. Would they join or would they not join? One of them, one of them is, one of them among the two people, father Attiku. He's looking for where it will be well with him before he will move. So asking for full membership, that will not happen. And like I will always say, politicians are surprised that we believe them, even when they don't believe themselves. Those people who are asking them to, to bring, to come up with full membership, to come and join or stay out, they are also wasting their time, because these guys will scheme them and scheme them to the point they will not believe. Finally, before I leave, I want to seriously ask Nigerian youth to rise up, join political parties where decisions are made, instead of us to always stay at home to complain and say this is this, this is this. My brother in the studio that is wearing glasses, I'm still waiting for the election of your estate. I'm still waiting, if you want to go election, I'm campaigning for you seriously. That, that, that apart, before I go lastly. This nation called Nigeria, right now we are on one bar, one bar. The, the, the battery in this nation is remaining one bar. We need a good charger. Not all these chargers in all these political parties. So youth, rise up, we have a better charger. We, the youth, are better chargers to charge this nation back to where it is. Not all these people, all of them, you know, I don't want to call their names, those in Dubai, those of us everywhere we are. These chargers are no good. Even the current charger that we have now is not charging well. It's not charging very well and we know it. Thank you.
Thank you so much, N C C A, and I'll keep you posted on the elections in my estate.
Very important.
Back to national issues. He raised many salient points there, that it's, politics is personality driven. He also talked about the importance of youth participation, that young people should go out there instead of complaining on social media. And, you know, join political parties, be part of the decision-making process. Why is this important as someone that is, is very active in the political sphere?
Okay, so.
From your experience.
Yes, politics is about number and there's one belief in the community that one political party is better than the other. I, I, I always get irritated when you think A P C is the worst political party. You see all those, most of those small, small parties that you don't know, they are worse than the party in, in government. And the only way to make a party same is for same people to populate it. It's as simple as that. When, when you're not surprised, when A P C was doing his primary and people voted for the sitting president over the former vice president. In terms of somebody who communicated his vision so clearly. But that will always happen if you don't have people who understand that kind of vision that is being communicated as delegates.
Paper is different from the politics.
Let it, let it look good on paper first. It has to look good on paper first. Let people be able to see it on paper first. You see, architecture, it's about preparing before wedding.
Right.
You don't have to just go and wait before you, let it be good on paper first. Let's see, let it be a vision that people can relate with.
Okay.
Then we can actually move on from.
I want us to talk about something that is good on paper and this paper exactly is the Daily Times newspaper and the front page of Daily Times, that's a good one, yeah? The Daily Times newspaper, something good on paper that I can see, bottom, middle area of the paper, Sokoto government declares free education suspends collection of. Well, we are dragging the ones that are not doing well. I think it's important that we applaud the ones that are doing well, but let's get your thoughts on that.
Okay, so free education has been part of our democracy since inception. In fact, one of the beliefs then is the fact that once you educate a child, you're giving him an opportunity to thrive. Whether that belief is still in the marketplace now, it's a different ballgame entirely. But of course, we have to encourage people to get into the classroom. Because our reasoning is our result. Our thinking at the end of the day is our product. And the best way to actually alter the thinking of people is to get them into the classroom. But beyond free education, one of the strategies that I've conversed for over the years is the fact that when you must make the classroom better than the parlor. So that you discourage people from watching television if they have an opportunity to do so. And what does that mean? If I know now, one of the things that the former government introduced is the school feeding programme. The essence of it is to encourage people to leave their house, because they will find bread. But at the end of the day, they destabilized it. They spent a whole lot of money, nobody talked about it. And when you get to this school, you, you see a loaf, they cut it into the middle and put raw steel instead of egg, instead of food. So we appreciate what the government is doing in Sokoto and we want them to take it a bit further, to make the classroom more attractive, so that people will be willing to flow.
Thing about the school feeding programme, can we have the headline of the Daily Times back up please, producer? Yes, the, the picture there is about the school feeding programme. That's the special advisor to Mr. President on school feeding, signing an M O U with the Kebis, with, with, with an NGO in Kebi State. Still on the importance of the school feeding programme. Maybe it will be revitalized and I, I would try and facilitate a conversation with the special advisor to the president on school feeding, because it's very attractive and it's important to give children food as a way of getting them to.
And the, one of the, one of the essence that, that was defeated initially, and I hope that they're going to work on it, is also to have a semblance of balanced diet. Because where I grew up, it's, you took it, you took the food you took last night, it's what you wake up to. Sometimes it's very cold, you take it, you go to school and you sleep all through in the class. So the idea is that, let's have, especially in the rural communities, guys, government does not seem to understand what's going on in rural communities.
Even Olif, with the look on her face, she's kind of shocked.
I don't even know how.
What kind of child abuses this?
I don't, I don't even know how to explain these things. I don't know how to explain, because it, 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 it looks impossible, but that's the reality. Do you know people still wake up and they can't go to school because there's nothing to eat? Is that bad? So that's the essence of having some of these things come, come back. So beyond free education, please let's make the class attractive. And one of the ways to make it attractive is, I think, what they are signing.
You are going to talk about the situation in Akiti State.
Yes, we are making classrooms attractive, but we're seeing young pupils in Akiti State scooping water. I won't vary. If you have the video, maybe we can quickly put it up. And it's, it's a really heartbreaking video. They were flooded. Look at, look at a class in Akiti State. This is very, very.
So now, again, because we need also to be very careful, the fact that you have this does not mean that the government is not doing anything. But here is it, most governments in Nigeria work because of the next election, not because of their own conviction. When you work according to your conviction, you look at it and say, I am going to touch these three sectors, the most important sectors. I am going to touch education, this and this. And you know that your four-year tenure, you are heavy on this. The United Nations made a suggestion to us that our yearly budget, that allocation to education should be around twenty-seven percent. How many states, not to even talk about the federal government, is actually tailoring their budget towards this? It is about winning the next election, stomach infrastructure across the community. So we need to be strategic. It doesn't mean that the government in Akiti is not doing anything, but the fact is that most of our government in Nigeria lacks strategic focus in terms of what they want to achieve within four years. Problem plenty, but if you concentrate and everybody will come to know that this is your priority, in two thousand and seven, if you drive to Nodostate, you don't need anybody to tell you that health is the priority of the government. In fact, they had, they were, Nodostate government was the first government to have trisaku. There's a clinic in a trisaku and they transport pregnant women from-
Mobile clinics.
Yes, mobile clinic. They, they transport pregnant women from their home to the hospital. In case anything happens within the process, they can at least attend to them there. It was very clear, but when Alakuri Akere Dulu came, his government destroyed everything that was built by Mimi Co in terms of the health sector. What happened? He couldn't sustain that, he felt he had to pick another thing. The only thing that that man was heavy on was security. But it would have been better to maintain what your uh producer, producer saw did and lead on it.
Well, that's kind of what we see with governments of the day, where there's a lack of continuity. And like you said, we need to be able to come into a state and know what is your priority at this moment. Here on Breakfast Central, our priority is going to move from newspaper review to entertainment. Thank you so much, Noto Maja, for joining us.
It was a pleasure.
This, this line that, that is dropping, okay?
We have Sam Dandy, who's one of the greatest entertainers, well, maybe not entertainers, because I don't know who he's entertaining, but the greatest entertainment journalist on the face of the earth and he will bring us the entertainment news in a moment.
Wow.
Sam Dandy is here to bring us entertainment all the way from Toronto. Good morning, Sam Dandy.
I can't wait, I can't wait.
Sam Dandy, always a pleasure to see you, one of the best to ever do this, amazing guy.
It's a Friday, so you know, I gotta look the part and give the entertainment. Are you ready?
Yes, drop it like it's hot.
Bring that hype, wow.
Oh my goodness.
Let's move, we don't have time.
Let's get into this one. Nigerian Afrobeat star Davido has officially become a voting member of the Recording Academy. He's given the right to nominate and vote at future Grammy Awards. Now, this recognition comes on the back of his multiple Grammy nominations. He's been nominated four times, though he has not yet secured a win. His induction is seen not only as a personal milestone, but a symbolic win for Afrobeat and Nigerian music's rising influence on the global scene.
Brilliant, David Adelieke is one of my favorite musicians. It's uh, oh, oh, one for a reason, I mean, great, great one and Nigeria to the world, worth the celebration.
Let me ask Olive, do, do you think this is like, I haven't won, but let's just give you-
No, 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 I think that Davido has earned his rights. You know, whatever win he gets today, he deserves it. I just wish that the naysayers will allow him be and stop dragging him because of Grammy. Having a Grammy or not having won a Grammy is not a yardstick for determining the amazing talent and hard work that Davido has.
I mean, look at, look at both of us, we haven't won Grammys, but we're still shining.
Shambala Diamond.
With that kind of voice, we might never maybe-
Let's move from that one, we're going to go out of Africa for a bit. Jimmy Kimmel's return to late night television was pure emotion and he fought back tears while addressing the controversy that led to his suspension. The suspension stemmed from his pointed commentary about the assassination of political activist Charlie Kirk, where Kimmel's remarks drew heavy backlash and regulatory scrutiny. Now, ABC under Disney pulled the show amid pressure from affiliates like Sinclair and Next Star. Some stations refused to air his return, but Kimmel, however, stopped short of this apology, citing of course, free speech and a desire to clarify misunderstanding instead. I, I want to watch this, but this was emotional, like seeing how he acted to this, I mean, it's his job.
And I do like the fact that a lot of A-list artists rallied behind him. They signed a letter saying, look, uh this cancel culture, we need to protect free speech, because it might be Jimmy Kimmel today and somebody else tomorrow.
First of all, I don't see, I, I understand, maybe I don't even understand the outrage against Jimmy Kimmel. And it's not just A-list celebrities, I applaud A-list celebrities, but I would also say the popul- populists. They realize the strength in numbers and when they realized the subscriptions were going down, they had to then rea-, they said they had a conversation with him. It was given, we are losing money, Jimmy Kimmel, please come back on air.
Exactly.
But he wasn't actually making fun of Charlie Kirk. It was a reaction of the president that was like, ah, he asked you about your personal reaction, you're talking about construction, you know? And which people oftentimes poke fun at the president and they do that here in Nigeria as well. I don't think it was a, a statement that was directly made, made to make or the, make it insensitive. Yes, but I applaud him for being mature enough to understand that, yes, you might not have intended it that way, but some people will misinterpret it. And especially because it's an issue that relates to the death of someone, you know, we, he of course had to apologize, so I think he handled it brilliantly and all is well that ends well.
This is what you're about, people call, we are more mature than ourselves.
I'm mature, I want to know, hey, I love me.
I, I, well, maybe I'm not that year, but-
Yeah, you, yeah.
Are we watching this?
Um no, let's go on.
All right, well, recent reports claimed that Nigerian singer Kiss Daniel's personal and business accounts were frozen by court order following a demand for over two hundred thousand euros in damages allegedly linked to failure to fulfill a paid performance. Now, however, Kiss Daniel and his media team or his team have denied the reports, calling them false, misleading and meaning to damage his reputation. Now, this drama adds to his long-running legal history. I remember uh him in the disputes with his former label, uh G Worldwide. So I, I, this is, where do these rumors come from? Why do people post these things when they're not sure about it?
Some of them are clickbait, some is just due to lack of better things to do with their time and they know it will generate buzzing controversy and it's just their famine outrage instead of famine aura.
Wow, he's on something today.
He's on the roll.
My Gen Z's coming out, I love it, it's giving Gen Z.
Roll, roll boy.
It slaps.
It slaps, gas.
Lock it, lock it.
We've got to move from that one. During a conversation with tennis legend Roger Federer, Burna Boy declares Fuji legend Sahidu Shupra his goat, which is not an animal, the greatest of all time is what we call goat, it's Gen Z, okay? Now, it's a bold tribute that is being celebrated across Nigerian music circles now. Oshupra responded emotionally, recognizing the moment as a monumental moment for Fuji music, bringing more visibility and respect to the genre across, you know, Afrobeat and Africa. Now, Burna is big, how, how did you feel about this when you saw it?
I mean, it was amazing conversation, Burna and Roger Federer, two goats. Olive, you're also my goat, man, but we'll get to that later. Brilliant, brilliant conversation and I swear, no one expected this.
No one expected that, big guy.
Sorry, don't be, my goat, man.
My own goat is the person that sang, after walking, he local, he badu local, come back there.
The weekend is upon us.
Because the weekend is upon us. But I think that on a much, you know, on a more serious note, it's important for us to give honor to woman or is due. I, I like that this younger generation of artists, and when I say younger, because Burna Boy is in my, is in my group and we are young, please. Yes, we may not be Gen Z, but we are young, that we give honor to women or is due. There are people who have formed the fabrics upon which the current musicians have started to weave their music. Burna Boy oftentimes has, has spoken about the imprint that Fela Nicola Pokuti has on his music.
That's right.
For us to be, to be able to celebrate what we have today, we must acknowledge those who have gone ahead to set the footprint, to set the tracks, for us to be able to work in them. And it's not just music and broadcasting, for example, the likes of uh-
Cyril Stobart.
Cyril Stobart, the likes of the great Eugenia Abou, who, you know, was one of the first people that could do what I'm doing today, showing us-
The likes of my aunt, Rontia Bolua of NTA News.
Absolutely, exactly, Bimba Lujie. There's so many, you know, people that we can think of in our industry, but the one thing, I'm glad that he's able to give Sahidu Shupra his flowers. I think that that's a prior call to all of us. The charge would be to think of anybody, someone who's been instrumental to your journey, your career, someone who's inspired you up close, you know, from far, and give them their flowers today. Just be able to, like Chimamanda says, do not admire quietly, admire out.
And since we're giving flowers, I'd like to give a little flower, a little bit of leaf to our director, our lovers' drip, yes.
Which leaf are you giving him, is it Olive?
Wow, okay, okay.
Final story.
All right, final story. In a candid interview on The Breakfast Club, Tiwa Savage, the queen of Afrobeat, denied the rumors linking her romantically to Whisked and opened up about her public fallout with Davido. I could play the video and it's, it's interesting. She revealed that the rift between Davido began, of course, on Instagram. It involves Sofia Mamadou, Davido's child's mother, and then, let's watch this, honestly.
That's some old wounds.
You recently got your fans going, you're trying to figure out who you were talking about. You did an interview, you, you did an interview, you talk about this secret romance and, you know, this per- this celebrity you were dating and it had to be on the low and they would do parties at the house and you would stay away from the people when the parties would be going on. Now people want to know who the he- because people think you're talking about Whisked.
Yeah, I know, and you know, man, shout out to Whisked, I love Whisked, I respect Whisked, it's not about Whisked. Um I said the person was a public figure, but I didn't, he's not, he's not an artist. But there hasn't been any kind of communication between us. I was hurt by how it transpired. So our kids are friends and they've gone to the same school since they were one, they're ten now. I've known David before that, but I've naturally grown a relationship with the mother of their kid. And um I, I didn't really know that, you know, there was issues. I mean, I know that he's moved on and he's married, you know, whatever, but I, I, I don't know what's going on apart from that. And I guess I was at an event and she was too, so naturally like, hey, how are you, dah 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 dah, we're partying, drinking, doing snap and whatever and he saw that and-
She had a lot to say and I-
Can you conclude that?
So it's basically inheriting beef bar?
Yeah.
So he is not in a good mood with his baby's mother and he's wondering why you're in- So do you inherit beef, Binger?
May I have fight for you, I have to inherit it, you are my person.
My person.
Actually, me, I don't know, people might come for me, I don't usually. The fact that you're fighting with somebody, no means the person know, yeah.
You don't have to show solidarity in, in joining her to aid. But I love the interviewer, the American accent is something I admire so much. She, she called interview, interview, interview. She also spoke about the internet.
So we have to get out of the show right now, so we don't consider using from the internet. We'll be back again on Monday, thank you so much, Sam, for joining us.
Thanks for this interview.
Shout out to Tiwa Savage, I really, really like her.
And no Tiwa and Whisked, please.
Yes, people should allow her rest.
And by the way, I love your drip.
Tiwa is so talented.
I wish management would let political broadcasters also express ourselves like this. I love the drip.
I love it, the drip, next week we're coming with winter jackets to work.
Yeah, that's, that's on period.
We'll see you again on Monday, have yourselves a wonderful weekend. Just Siri comes up right next. Until then, remember to connect with us at News Central on all social media platforms. Have a great weekend, I am Olive Amody.
Have a great weekend, everyone, happy birthday, Tunde Raji, bye bye.